Sorry, hit someone in the head. Thank you, good morning, this is the Finance and Governance Committee number 202405. I recognise the members of the committee who are here, councillor Madsen, deputy mayor councillor Johnic, councillor Doyle, her first meeting that she's attending of this committee, so welcome, councillor Antonelli, Mayor Harding and councillor Madden, and there's no other member who's, yeah councillor Augustine, who's a non-member who's attending the meeting. So there are no apologies, acknowledgement of country, councillor Doyle.
Thank you Chair. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share, we pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people.
Thank you. Declarations of interest in any matters on the agenda, do any councillors wish to declare an interest in any matter? No, thank you. Business outstanding, which is nil. Confirmation of the minutes of the last meeting of this committee on the 3rd of September 2024, would someone please move the receipt or that they be confirmed? Councillor Antonelli moved, second to councillor Johnic, is there any discussion about the accuracy of the minutes? I'll put the motion all in favour against that's carried unanimously. Officers' reports, first one is number two, procurement of, in relation to 235 Smiths Road Red Bank of a proposed new sublease, are there any questions that councillors wish to request of the officers, yes, could the appropriate officer please come forward?
Yes.
Good morning, just your name and position please.
Good morning, Alicia Reek, Property Services Manager.
Thank you, councillor Doyle.
Thank you, just in relation to facilities number four in the report, the Red Bank Collingwood Park Sports Complex, can I just get a better understanding of, a note page 23 talks about the proposed $200,000 worth of capital upgrades to the facility and $300,000 worth of equipment, can you provide some more detail around that?
Okay, with the options provided, with the capital expenditure and stuff like that, that is a commitment that they would work through with us if they were to enter into a lease with us, sublease with us.
What's council's expectations in that regard? Have we turned our mind to what that might look like?
I would probably have to divert to the activation area, Don Stewart to sort of answer those questions, but we've got the, I guess, commitment through the terms and conditions of the sublease.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. Would someone care to move that item? Councillor Johnic moved, second to councillor Antonelli, discussion? Councillor Doyle?
Through you Chair, councillor Antonelli has just raised with me, he and I met with the operator of, sorry? Yeah, we, we did meet with the operator Australian Kroll. And that was just to generally discuss.
August, they just met with us just to, yeah, just to discuss this.
Microphone.
Yeah, the 28th of August, it was just a, a meeting just to inquire the status of this matter really, and there was no other real issues discussed, although he did confirm with us his proposal of capital upgrades and equipment.
So, so is that just a precautionary advice or declaration? That there was no substantial discussion really?
No, councillor Antonelli raised it just, just now, I didn't think it was, we needed to declare that.
I'll defer to the CEO, just on her advice about that particular circumstance of no substantial discussion about the lease itself.
I, I think that's fine, provided that there's no commitment centered into, or suggestions of any decision that could be made one way or the other.
Other than the fact that it was coming before council in a future meeting, or before the relevant committee in a future meeting?
Okay. All right.
And so sorry, I just to provide some extra context, he wasn't, I guess, out of the ordinary, I'd previously last term met with this operator, he and/or his staff liked to keep the relevant councillors up to date along the way around programming out of the complex, this particular meeting, obviously the lease was still outstanding, so he had, I guess, minor frustrations from him, but made it absolutely clear that we couldn't get involved in that process, so, and my office has managed those meetings and notification to council that they're occurring, so I'm.
Yes, I think the advice is that that doesn't require a formal declaration, but it's appropriate that you mention that today. Mayor?
Last week, on Thursday the 10th of October, I had a meeting with the owner and their chief officer, in that room was four council officers, four or five, but Mr Stewart, Ms Reek, Mr Jordan, my chief of staff, I can't remember if Mr Heenan was there or not, but yes, at least there was at least four council officers for a 45 minute appointment.
So I think similar comments apply?
Yeah, there was no, yeah, it was just a.
All right, that's, we'll just treat that as an informal advice to the committee. Is there any discussion on the motion before us? I'll put the motion all in favour against that's carried unanimously. Item three, procurement workplace health and safety management software subscription, are there any questions that councillors have of the relevant officer? No, someone care to move that item? Councillor Johnic, a second to councillor Madden? Discussion? No, I'll put the motion all in favour against that's carried unanimously. Item four, procurement whole of government banking services, are there any questions of the relevant officer? Item four? Oh, sorry. Any questions? No, okay, would, would someone care to move the adoption of that report, councillor Johnny, second to councillor Antonelli, discussion? I'll put that motion all in favour against. Oh, discussion, sorry, all right, discussion.
No discussion.
Okay, no discussion, all in favour?
Sorry, can I have a discussion?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry.
I guess just to look at the fact that as, as a council and obviously under, we have our powers from the state government, the Local Government Act, so it's good to see that we, I guess, try to keep a lockstep with the state, and they've had that, that change as well, so, yeah, so we'll be supporting this, thank you Chair.
Any further discussion? I'll now put the motion all in favour against that's carried unanimously. Item five, procurement contract extension 13482 Grounds Maintenance and Associated Services, are there any questions of the relevant officer? No. Would someone please move the adoption of that report, councillor Doyle seconded, councillor Madden, discussion? Once, twice, three times? Okay, I'll put that motion, all in favour against that's carried unanimously. Item six, procurement variation to contract 16456, I think we've got to amend the wording, the word programme, I assume, programme partner for the Ipswich Centre CBD Transformation, are there any questions of the relevant officer? Mayor Harding, could we have the relevant officer come forward please?
Yeah, I guess my question is more around Chair, just ensure that it doesn't impact our budgeted spend and, and how, is this, is this being covered by liquidated damages or, just want to clarify.
Thank you through the chair, so we, we have an offset through a claim that we have made, but this expense can be met within the existing budget, so there's no extra budget required.
Thank you, see ya.
Is that the only query? Any other questions or queries? No, thank you. Would someone care to move the adoption of that recommendation? Councillor Johnic, second to councillor Doyle, discussion? I'll put the motion all in favour against that's carried unanimously. Item seven, proposed acquisitions of land for info 4658 Ripley Road, upgrade Cunningham Highway to Fisher Road, are there any questions to be asked of the relevant officer? No, someone care to move the adoption of that recommendation? Moved councillor Antonelli, seconded councillor Johnic, who was endeavouring to move it. Any discussion? I'll put the motion all in favour against that's carried unanimously. Item eight, renewal of expenditure lease over freehold land located Carrollley Shopping Village 39 Junction Road, Chiar, kiosk one, are there any questions of the relevant officer required? No?
Can I just, I think my question can be clarified through the CEO, I take it that's the library pod, is it? It is the library pod, yeah, thank you.
Through the chair, yes it is.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, would someone care to move the adoption of that report, removed councillor Doyle, seconded councillor Johnic, discussion? I saw the mayor's green light first, but I heard your voice first.
I'll sort of do some quick maths to see how much it costs per, per loan, the library pod is very much loved in the Carrollley community, it is, it's a great representation of, of council and our, our values and, and how much we do pro our libraries and, and how big a part they are of our community and how they do serve all ages as well, so I know it's not cheap at, at all, at, you know, 25,000 or nearly 26,000 a year, but it is very well used and, and much loved in the community.
Councillor Madden?
I, I guess I should have asked this of the council officer, but the mayor might be able to assist me, what is the square metre area that we occupy? Is it literally just the pod?
Oh, you'd be surprised.
That would be 30. Through the chair on page 95, 30 square metres.
30, three zero?
That's correct, Chair.
Oh, you'd be right.
Your, your microphone, your microphone.
I reckon it would fit in the void here.
Correct.
And I don't think that's 30 square metres.
But maybe that's what we've tenanted.
Chair, it just seems odd that the pod is so small and yet we lease 30 square metres.
Okay, were, are there any questions, you know, what arises, is there any ancillary, is there seating there that people can sit around?
It's possibly just the minimum requirement from the shopping centres, I would have thought around insurance and things like that, yeah.
Or provision of, through your chair, provision of access bins, seating etc.
Councillor Madden, do you need information later, you're happy to proceed with this recommendation?
I simply want a clarification as to how many metres we had, I'm a little bit surprised by the answer, but happy to proceed and support the suggested motion.
If I can assist, if I can assist, the square actually shows on page 98, albeit it's not, it's only a square on the ground, it doesn't show the schematic of the, the actual booth, but it says five by six. I must admit I wouldn't have thought it was that big, but, but.
People happy to continue to take a vote on this matter after the discussion's finished?
And I just have done my quick maths, it's about a dollar sixty per lending.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you, I'll put the motion all in favour against that's carried unanimously. Item nine, update on the previous council decision, a proposed amendment trustee lease over 135 Brisbane Terrace Goodner, our general councillor Tony Dunleavy has a indication of a variation we could or should make, is Tony still here? And any other questions to either Tony or another officer? Thanks, just your name and title please.
Yeah, Tony Dunleavy, General Counsel. Councillors, I brought to the attention of the Chair prior to the meeting, in relation to recommendation B, we don't have to actually consider that matter because that matter has already operated in terms of the repeal, we've entered the lease, so you can't repeal a lease that you've already entered because the contracts form, so even if you've made the recommendation today to pass it, it would have had no consequences whatsoever, so I just want to bring that to your attention.
Any further questions on?
Does that mean we remove recommendation B or does it?
Well, we haven't, well, I suggest that when this is moved, that we don't include B, if people accept that, that, you know, we, we accept the, well, C could become B and D could become C. Any further questions of Tony about the, about the matter generally or, or any other questions to another officer, the mayor?
If I could ask, Mr Dunleavy, just to clarify, we're basically looking at either leaving the rent the way it is or halving it, is that basically what?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a matter for yourselves, the lease has been entered into, there's a five year lease and it's a variation of.
Do you mind explaining, I have heard, obviously from some of the executive there, but what's, what's some of the thinking behind the organisation to support that?
Well, perhaps if we're going to discuss the lease in detail, we might, should probably go into closed session.
Yeah, I'd probably agree with that because I've just got.
Okay, are there any other questions of To- Tony which don't require a closed session? Are there any questions or any other officer that don't require a closed session? No, all right. I'll ask the, thanks Tony, I'll ask, oh, you can stay there because we will move into a closed session. I'll ask the CEO to identify.
I'd say commercial matter.
Okay, okay, I'll move the, in accordance with section 254 J3 of the Local Government Act, that negoti-, that the meeting be closed for negoti-, for the reasons of negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which a public discussion would be likely to prejudice the interests of the local government, is there a second to that? Councillor Doyle, any discussion, all in favour against that's carried unanimously? Against, that's carried unanimously. Thank you. We've just had a closed session in relation to this matter to get legal and other financial advice in relation to this matter. I take it there's no further discussion with officers? Someone please move a motion in relation to this matter?
Through you, Chair. Can I just move recommendation A, delete recommendation B, and make recommendation C recommendation B and move the first option? And then recommend original recommendation D, just change that to a C, please. I'll move that.
So it'd be A, A, delete B, C1 would become B and D would become C.
C, correct.
Right, we've got that.
That's the deletion of all and two, is it? The alternative?
Oh, well, yeah, two paragraphs there.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the... yeah, or the word or, the paragraph starting with or and the paragraph numeral two.
Maybe a second amendment, a second D.
Motion.
Motion.
Yeah. Discussion. No? I'll call on the mover.
In relation, I guess, I just wanted to pick up on the transition from the existing to the new proposed lease arrangements without touching on anything confidential, but the transition could have impacted the club. And I think that what I've recommended is a better way to transition for the functions of the club financially.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all right. I'll put the motion. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, through the Chair. Is the one needed anymore at the beginning of fee?
No, the word one can come out of B, yeah. Thank you.
Maybe we can include that after...
Yeah. Right. Thank you for that. Okay, I'll put that motion with that slight change. All in favour? Against, that's carried unanimously. Is it appropriate for... we won't finish the others in under about 15 or 20 minutes, so is it appropriate we take a break at this stage? Okay. I'll move that we adjourn until 12:40pm. Is there a second? A second of Mayor Harding? All in favour? Against, that's carried unanimously.
Thank you. We're reopening the meeting at 12:41pm. All of the members are in attendance with the exception of councillor Doyle, who I believe will join us again shortly. We're on to item 10, fraud and corruption control policy. Are there any questions that councillors would like to ask of the relevant officer? No? All right. Someone move the adoption of that report? Councillor Johnock, councillor Madden, discussion? A discussion, the mayor?
Thank you, Chair. With this council's past failures around robust governance and ethical conduct, I'm very pleased to see the organisation's ensuring the fraud and corruption control policy is being kept up to date to ensure the hard work put in by the CEO, the executive leadership team, and staff is reflected by mitigating the risks associated with fraud and corruption. We've worked hard to regain the confidence of the community and we must ensure the highest possible standard is expected and kept to ensure the embedded ethical culture and work environment continues to prevent fraud and corruption. And I'm just going to quote two lines from the Windage report, just to show how far we have come. And this is from, page seven, where it says, "If the city council back in 2018 had no fraud risk register, despite a recommendation to do so from the internal auditor. There appears to have been a disregard for the importance of the internal audit function to proper governance." So I'll be supporting this and I appreciate the vigilance of the organisation and internal audit. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'll put the motion all in favour, against, that's carried unanimously. Item 11, amendments to CEO delegations due to legislative updates. Are there any questions of the relevant officer? No. Someone care to move the adoption of this recommendation? Move councillor Doyle, seconded councillor Madden. Discussion? Any discussion? I'll put the motion all in favour, against, that's carried. Item 12, the monthly financial performance report, August 2024. Are there any questions of the relevant officer? Mayor has the relevant officer? Thank you. Just, just up here. Thanks. Welcome, and if you state your name and title of your position, thank you.
Thanks, Christina Benoye. I'm the acting chief financial officer.
Thank you, Ms Benoye. Thank you very much. And through the chair, may I just ask how you're managing the unders and overs of our budget so far, just at the beginning of this year?
The overspends, we're actually, sorry, we are over in our revenue at the moment. So we are looking at doing a budget amendment for that, so that'll be coming up hopefully in the February council meeting. And we are slightly tracking under budget for our materials and services, however, that's a timing variance which will resolve over the coming months.
Do you have any issues or concerns with how we're tracking with our budget so far this financial year?
I don't have any concerns at the moment.
Thank you very much, Benoye.
Thank you.
So item 14 is the September report. Has anyone got any objections while we're presentation? Are you in a position to ask any questions now, so that we're doing the two reports for August and September? Otherwise, we might have to call you back a second time in about two minutes. Otherwise, we might have to call you back a second time in about two minutes. We might just deal with, with item twelve, that's for August at the moment. Just thank you and we'll, might get you back in a minute. Thank you. Thank you. Would someone care to move the adoption of this recommendation? Move, item twelve, yes, item twelve, councillor Antonelli, moved, seconded councillor Madden, any discussion? No discussion, I'll put the motion all in favour, against, that's carried unanimously. The report, I will do thirteen sequentially, the report on the Regulation Advisory Committee. Are there any questions of the relevant officer? Thank you. Someone care to move that report?
Sorry, I have some questions.
Oh, you're sorry, yeah.
Or maybe it's yourself, Chair, as just there's sort of not much in the...
No, there, is that the question?
Yeah, I guess, I guess, when I saw the reports come through for the committee and I saw there wasn't much there, so I was just wondering what was discussed.
We had scheduled that meeting for that particular day, there were no formal reports put forward, but just a general discussion generally about how this is moving forward. And it will be a, you know, work in progress for the next two years in relation to the review of the local laws.
Right, so it's obviously, it was a twenty three minute, minute, minute meeting?
It was, and I think it was scheduled, I think there was another meetings earlier in that day or briefing perhaps in that day. And because people were here, we still had that.
I guess I'll wait till it's moved and second I'll ask some questions.
Thank you. Any other questions, folks? Any other questions? Okay, I'll, would someone care to move that that report be received and adopted? Councillor Antonelli, seconded, councillor Johnick, discussion?
Chair, may I ask, is it a twenty three minute meeting, what things were discussed and any decisions or advice or anything like that?
There were no specific discussions and other people might help me out because it was of a general nature being discussed, there was, was nothing formal. But one issue that was raised by me was moving forward to, probably simultaneously in a way, but certainly with community consultation in relation to local laws, what local laws, if there are no local laws that are required on a particular topic. But probably more importantly, what local laws might be required in a modern, you know, council area such as... One issue that was raised, and this has come up previously about the use of roads, people with electric vehicles and running wires out across footpaths and things like that. I know in Sydney, and, yeah, running electric cables, you know, from up a storey out to a tree and then down to a car or a vehicle. So things like that, I'd, I'd suggested to the committee that that'd be one thing to look at and get the community feedback of what sorts of absolutely new local laws, you know, might be needed in a, in a modern society. That's, that's certainly one. People were unsure whether or not there was any ability to, to take any action now in relation to that. So it really was a general discussion because people were here.
So...
Yeah, Mayor? Mayor, yeah?
I was gonna say, I was sure, was there, well, there was a list of local laws and, and were they saying, we'll consult with that and we won't with that or...
No, 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 I think the consultation, this is my view, will be across the board. Yeah, no, there was no, no consideration of any particular local laws or any that don't require consultation. I think they all do, they're all up for grabs. One thing that was, that came up was in relation to the, the technical wording and the wording of our local laws, which are reasonably modern, it's not ancient sort of, you know, wording. So, but, but it really was just a general discussion and where it's going and probably having another meeting before the end of the year.
Sorry, through you, Chair, if, if I may add, just further to what councillor Tully was saying. It was around the language that was used and the, the headings. I note at the moment, I think we have a whole raft of local laws under a heading of administration or administrative. So it can be a little bit difficult, I guess, for residents to find relevant local laws. And, yeah, and then it was just a general discussion about, as councillor Tully raised, the electrical leads and wind chimes is another that bothers some in the community.
Yeah, and it was, that, that came up in the context of novel issues where wind chimes were of a serious issue to, to a neighbour and whether or not that should be governed by, by council because they've got no other scope of, you know, taking it any further. And it was, as it was depicted to, to the committee, it was really severely affecting the neighbour with no opportunity for resolution. So I think we're going to see a lot of innovative suggestions over the, over the next year or two. Was just, the, the other issue in that general context of our local laws and subordinate local laws, that one place fits all, that if it's a a matter about advertising, that people don't have to look at multiple local laws to, and multiple subordinate local laws to, to find all the rules that apply to advertising, if it's a business, whether electoral advertising or a business or whatever, that it's all contained in the one place. I think that's, yeah, pretty important. So it was just a discussion so that the officers and the councillors were on the same...
Piece of appropriate hair.
Yeah, yeah, on the same page, yeah, yeah.
I know the person who did attend talked about the fact that in the last term, the city of Morton Bay did a complete, you know, what we're doing now with our local laws, obviously, that was their, their tone. Was there any, because they did quite an extensive community consultation. Have council officers spoken with the city of Morton Bay and have they, is there any lessons learnt or is it underway or...
Well, apparently they got more, I wouldn't say objections, submissions than they did for their planning scheme. Something in excess of thirty thousand.
They did a mass, they did a massive campaign.
Yeah, it's, it's very rare in the reviews that I've seen of our local laws, at least one major one years ago. And, and they don't change a lot, you have local laws on, on roads and advertising, a whole host of things. It's, it's how much we want to regulate particular matters. But, yeah, that Morton Bay thing, we, I don't know if there's anyone in the gallery, any officers who can sort of indicate. If, if, I think Morton Bay thought that that was an excessive number of submissions, it all had to be individually addressed as well.
I guess I'm just, could say, when I had that, we had that first meeting, I asked if that could be looked at, or at least get some lessons learned. Do you know if that's happened or if it's going to happen?
Is there anyone, who was that? Oh, yeah, here we are, yeah. We get some, it's, it's certainly something to consider, you getting thirty thousand submissions on things where you'd think it'd be only a number of contentious issues. Thank you, can you just announce your name and title please?
Matt Smith, General Manager, Corporate Services. Mayor, I guess to, just to answer your question, we, we certainly prepared internally some lessons learned out of some of the experiences of the other local governments who have undertaken this. Our proposed approach at the moment, obviously pending support from yourselves and, and the advisory committee, is looking towards the community panels as more an opportunity to engage with the community more directly. The feedback we certainly have is a, a broader brush approach to that consultation doesn't allow you to, I guess, target the questions and the topic areas in the right way and you get some quite a volume of feedback that might not necessarily be as relevant as it could be and you are required to go through and respond to those individually. So it is quite a cumbersome process, we want to make sure we're targeting to the local laws, to the specific areas and the right groups of people, we'll continue to work through those things with the advisory committee and by this committee as we get closer to that.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think then Chair, it's, it's good to see that that's been, been, been looked at and I guess just looking at how we it's an opportunity too, if the community panel is going to be used to, to expand this, because I think they're, I think we get a lot more people on them and the more people we have on there with those interests, the better it is for our community. So it would be an opportunity for us to increase the membership of those community panels.
I agree with that and, but it's also an opportunity for councillors in relation to issues that come before them, like the wind chimes. And that's a very specific sort of issue, but whether it's a nuisance local law or you wouldn't just have a local law on wind chimes. But I think it's an opportunity for us to be aware of changing dynamics in our community and, you know, based on the feedback and understanding of complaints that we receive, whether or not we're, we're on the right track. All right, are there any other questions or any other comments, we're in the, considering the motion? Now, I'll put that motion all in favour, against, that's carried. Item fourteen, which is the late report for the September monthly financial performance report, are there any questions?
Chair, my question was just to, I guess, checking with the, the C E O. Are there any issues or concerns that you'd like to raise with the, the council?
Through the chair, no, not at this point, thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there a mover of that motion, please? Moved councillor Doyle, seconded councillor Harding, Mayor Harding, discussion? I'll put the motion all in favour, against, that carry, that's carried. There's no notices of motion, no matters arising. I don't think... I hope so. All right, that's the conclusion of the agenda, I declare the meeting closed at one fifty seven P M. Twelve fifty seven, it's a big day, a big day, twelve fifty seven P M.